Other topics, um... The city cemetery, we've discussed this before, but mowing season is coming up. Mike's crew has been taking man hours and equipment over there and keeping the city cemetery for quite some time. We've considered putting it out for bids and see what it would cost us to actually outsource cemetery care.
I think last time we talked about this, we discussed their actual account and how the money is spending in and can this come out of their actual cemetery account?
Probably not. I don't think they get money on a regular basis. It wouldn't take long to know that account away as best I could see. Do you know how much is in the cemetery account?
Uh, we haven't balanced everything and done reports for February, but for the end of January, uh, there was sixteen thousand, two seventy-six forty-four.
I think the way they earn the money, they have been keeping our plants fixed from cars and damage and things like that. Uh, they do some spending annually, but I don't know if they can take on the mowing. We're thinking that that mowing would probably cost between three fifty and four fifty per mowing. If it takes action. And, well, sometimes it won't be over two weeks.
Probably more likely once a month. Now, during the springtime, but as it gets hotter in the summer, we cut down to about once a month. A lot of it's centipede up the top and things. As always, those are slow growing grasses. They don't grow that fast.
What was the other thing about it is pulling the people off of the regulars, what they regularly doing, using that to mow when you could get it done cheaper than you can pay them people. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, they could keep going with their work. What did you say, Mike?
I think we figured that last year it cost us, it cost the city about five hundred dollars.
That's right.
Yeah.
Be cheaper almost to...
Well, yeah, if we could get it at about the same price, somewhere near that. Those people could be better utilized working on roads or stuff. It benefits a lot more people than... I know there's several graves in there, but I think we'd benefit a lot more people by utilizing those two to four men doing something else.
I didn't understand. How much they want us to do? They want us to pay for all of it or part or donate some more money to it?
No, just it would be picking up the tab for mowing.
I suggested it come out of their account.
We have really confirmed that it can't come out of theirs. I just don't know if it ever... I imagine it took years for them to build it up to sixteen thousand. I don't know that they give in very much and there's not going to be a lot more grave plots sold because not a lot more...
It probably costs, if we pay for it, you know, I'm just guessing, somewhere between forty-five hundred and five thousand dollars through the year to get it taken care of. That's it, you know? That's just a number off the top of my head, but I think that's somewhere about what it would cost if it's four hundred and fifty dollars.
We, I've had a man approach me about putting it in a bid and a gentleman that used to work with Larry at the camp. He was doing this on the side and he wants to bid on the job if we put it out to bid. And I don't know what either one is going to do, but you know, I'd work somewhere, so if you know if it's going to be outrageous, I wouldn't even just put it out there. I just suggest we keep doing it ourselves, but if we could do it at less expense or even the same amount of expense, I believe from outsourcing to pay up a man. You know, that's just what I was thinking about. We're getting it done, but they have to make a special effort to get it done. And sometimes it's not a convenient time when the cemetery needs cleaning up for them to turn loose and do it. If we had it under a contract, that means we're somewhat obligated to see if it gets done so many times a year.
Do you still have inmates working for you?
I've had some in the last, well, not the last week, but I had some about for two or three weeks last month. But on a regular basis, I don't.
I don't know that we would find anybody to do it cheaper than we would pay the inmates to do it.
Well, the inmates can't do it by themselves.
Right. I mean, they have a supervisor.
Right.
Right. Whoever went and completed the course is with them, I mean.
Yes.
So, I mean, I know that's going to take one man to go with them and oversee them.
What do you recommend, Mike? You, uh, about the way you think's the cheapest way for us to do it? What do you recommend?
Well, I'm not used to that, but you know, I might as well say it just to get somebody to take care of it myself.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think so.
I think we'd be money ahead, I guess, you'd say, but not just money, but...
Yeah, well, you, uh, you know, the people like I do around here that do this mowing.
I can tell you, the guy that's playing himself in ways, he does this and he's been doing that one in Winfield. Winfield City Cemetery for several years now, so... The thing about putting, putting stuff out to bid, in my opinion, is if you put it out there to get the lowest price, you probably, if you take the lowest price, you're probably going to get the lowest quality of work.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And that's why I always...
Well, you've got to take care of mine to do it.
Well, I think, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, I know, I know he would do it. I feel pretty sure he'd do a good job. And we'd make sure, you know, that we wouldn't just take whatever...
Well, we didn't do it with anybody that we...
That's right.
Very good. We've got people who have to do it to be our somebody. Are you going to speak to them about how much you want to charge or if you're...
Well, we definitely have an idea. The mayor had mentioned a number there and that I think that's pretty close to what we can get him for. As a matter of fact, I just talked with someone else, Barnfield Cemetery, which is a lot smaller than... And I think they pay their guys and we're around three seventy-five to four hundred dollars to do it.
My mowing duty, I had that, I had that thumber that they'd given to us one time because I donate to it every year. But I forgot.
But he was something compared to you. I think he's reasonable on this price.
Yeah, I think so.
And it's, if you go up there and walk around in that cemetery and try to think, well, how am I going to mow this? It's a, it's a bugger. The graves aren't anywhere in line. They're staggered. You can't get motors in between. And it's a, it's a lot, lot to it.
Yeah, good job. But you don't have a price for it yet.
Not a firm price, but we'll do better.
I would say look into getting them to mow it and go from there then. Now, you talk about inmates. A lot of times they'll tire up more than cost for it. I mean, they, when they get on equipment like that and stuff from ground...
Sounds like that big way they get.
Back in town.
I'll give you an example. You know, we've had some good inmates, don't get me wrong. But I had some picking up paper the other day. Phone calls came blowing in because they were walking down this street, can't have any of it here. And they were close to the school. We're on student property, but they were close to the school. They didn't want them out there. I've had them working in town, downtown area, people calling. Why are they downtown picking up paper? Why are they down here trimming up these shrubs? You get all, I mean, it's, it's just not, to me, it's just not worth having them. And that's just the honest opinion. And I'm sure some of them are good folks.
Yeah, you just don't, you don't know.
But it's not worth it.
And they'd have to use your equipment.
Yes.
If you had inmates, they'd have to use the city's...
Right, yeah.
Like a little bit somewhere.
The city had a lawn mower and I don't even care if they throw them up. I would urge you to talk to the guy if you think he's the... If he's not, you can always find him with a person.
About it.
You can go out there and mow it.
I believe you, I believe you'd do it.
You didn't give it that, did you? I said, you can go out there and mow it then, but you find somebody else.
I'm not getting forward. I'm talking about a good time. That's going to look pretty forward.
I think we ought to try it for a year and if we like what we get, we, you know, continue on with that. If we don't like what we get, we know that we can mow it.
I'll pay you, I'll pay you a firm price before money. And then, younger side.
But I would recommend this man to...
Did he talk?
Yeah.
Well, it's a good job for somebody, maybe if you're retired or whatever, pretty good, you know.
Or do good work.
Yeah.
And do good work there. I mowed a lot of them before. I was retired. I was about twelve, thirteen, fourteen, old. I am about five or six. I mowed every summer.
Okay, well, we've got a good bit of ground to cover, so we'll, we'll come back to that. Just wanted to throw it out there again because mowing is getting close. The weeds are already picking my head up really fast the last few days. We're, we're happy to have guests with us. They count, they're back in the house. Come on in and get those chairs. Come on.
You can go around this way.
We're well up, Mike. I guess, I look.
He's just kidding. See what they do to the other guests.
Adam too is one of our guests here and we appreciate our dear, our commissioners coming to discuss with us the matters of the new county jail that's needed and maybe funding also is going to be needed. I just want to open the floor and let you guys kind of tell us where you are, where you're headed. If you're still interested in city property in the Bedford part, let's talk about that too. I'm just going to let your spokesman take it from here and we'll reply as needed, okay? Well, we're, 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 we're facing, I don't know, well, hopefully not on doorstep, Scott, no more, but it's not a federal order that, you know, we got to do something. And I think that the step in the right direction was acquiring some land over here that we can need to come to some conclusion on, the price on. And then, but of course, in the funding of the jail, we, uh, that's, that's going to take all of us to fund the jail. We have some obligations that we hope will be paid off soon. It's two twenty-one, Scott, about to be...
At least hand answer.
Our call centers, we're pretty upset, some of our hospital tax money. And then, you know, it's, same, of course, the city is, of course, you know, we're going to have to have an obligation this too because we take city prisoners out of the jail and some kind of completion of a percentage. Each city uses a jail, which like to me would be equitable and we, you know, it's just working out some deal of some, how much each one's going to have eaten yet for this, for this jail. Of course, we, you know, it's, they'll get a little more of the tax money than we do now and the city did. And I think those are our obligations, Scott, each month to the call center, about thirteen...
A little over fourteen, I believe, thousand a month.
Mm-hmm, so. And then, there's the other things, hopefully, they might, you build a jail, you got to operate a jail. There's some things that, maybe some court costs go up, some white, court costs, I'm sure it's not, I think, of course, pay for jail. But that pay, or key may be on them. But it is something that's going to have to be addressed. And I'm just saying, we do have, well, it's, it's obligations that are fixing to be paid off. And, you know, we're still getting good, a good use of the jail as far as people working, you know, payroll. I understand you all have payroll taxes and so, but, uh, it helps us with our budget. Have you, have you decided how much money you'll have to spend to build this jail or not? Well, what's, Scott, what's the figure? We could get around eight, ten million?
We're looking at ten. Hopefully, get it in at ten. I think there's been some hope. Maybe we could, we could get it in at eight, but let's...
Well, again, it's all going to have many beds you want and what we, uh, how we can afford what we can build up, but you can build a jail if you build on it. And not, you know, not have to build, you can afford to build a two hundred bed jail. But you can build one if you build on it.
Now, tell me, I was reading in the paper, I think about it, and it was talking about a larger one, but in there it says you could build a smaller one and it'd be large enough and we could afford to build it. Yes, Harry, it was at the eight or ten. I thought I was reading it like that. And I thought that was a good idea and maybe we could, with all of the towns, we could reach that number, you know. But still, it's something like you're talking about, is that the one you could add on to say?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we...
But of course. Yeah, of course. What you've got now, you can nearly use bigger now, couldn't you?
I think, I think June two and this, we, we went to a local council after failure and they built like a hundred and twenty-five bed jail, but there is room in that they can add fifty blocks at any time. And there's a twelve thousand square feet jail. And the same architect that done that jail told us it was six million dollars. And he said if we wanted to do hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five beds and later on the inside of this to add another fifty beds to it, that what he could do, which would save us money, is use their same plans, but we would have to, he would stretch, basically stretch the walls out on it and a little bigger and go to probably fourteen thousand feet. And he told me and Kenneth that he thought he could put us in it for eight million. And, you know, so we're looking at the high number, ten, maybe, you know, that.
But he always is more.
Right. And he's saying these jails, if you build at this type, it actually all operates out of center from the top, you know. And you'll see everything that goes on, they got cameras that can show you a pin, you know, in the public's room away. But what he's talking about, that you could go, you know, if we do a hundred and seventy-five in this fourteen thousand square or even up to two hundred, that we make and add fifty more if we do this. And if we stay in the eight to ten range, you know, we think that's a good deal. Because there are a lot, lots of, I mean, five years from there, ten, how many more are you going to do? And these are accessible too to build on to the outside if we need to add to, you know, the same way. But right now, we're trying to keep it as low as we can and just to get what was done for about eight to ten million, like that.
How many beds are in this jail down here now?
There's about sixty people.
Yep, sixty-five or seven. How many, how many are, how many are in there?
On the way out, the way I talked to Sheriff, there were eight to ten rooms. There was one, I believe, out in Dayton. They're sleeping three people, one on the floor.
So, you're talking about a hundred and fifty?
I think last week, Kevin told me.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty, pretty regular.
Hundred sixty-three. So, what you're, what you're proposing is something that's just going to get you even with about how many inmates you got now, right?
Even a little above, maybe, if we, if we can stretch the one seventy-five to two hundred. We, we would have to talk to him more to see if, I believe he quoted Ben Korf about a hundred and seventy-five, but a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five for about eight million.
If we didn't have to carry standing mates, his dips and don't, Scott can explain this. This hurt the county system. This hurt us. With the county, we could control our inmates, but the state inmates is a problem. And they're not opening up their obligation, what they're supposed to be doing.
I guess, I guess one of the things, you know, besides the money cost is that there's been a little bit of discussion about the jail in the park and the look of it will need to be somewhat compatible to the buildings that already occupy the park and especially the base of it to kind of match, I guess, the other buildings that's been put there. And I guess there's always, when we're talking about a jail, we want to be sure it's fairly secure, there's always, I guess, some sort of fencing that would keep citizens safe.
I think if, if you look to do it, they built theirs on three quarters of an acre right downtown there. And they've done just what you was talking about. They actually matched up with everything else down in your central district. And it looks, I mean, it looks good. It's brick, I think those are just brick and metal, you know, combined together. And then they're, they're outside housing and stuff. They use a back wall off it, four wall, and then the other is block. There's no fence. You can't see their activity outside, you know, and stuff, but it, it looks good. And this guy, the guy that told us this, you know, that we can build it kind of on the same plan and the brick, you know, the way it's used, but it, it actually looks good. And I, and I see your concern though, because you're close to the DHR and then later on, maybe down the road, the judicial center, whatever, you know. So, we need to, we need to look good, like you said.
Well, how much property are you going to have to have to put that on?
Well, we, I say we, some of the commissioners, but we've never very looked and I think that five point seven acres is what we done. And we kind of took it on ourself. We went ahead and hired somebody to come in and test the ground to see if it was suitable, you know. And that cost us, that cost us a little money and we took care of that. And I think that, that plot there is, is ideal for it and the land, you know, suitable for it. That's one thing that I was hoping y'all could tell us tonight, maybe you got a hard to figure in, in your head to tell, give us a, you know, about what y'all needed acre for that block there.
And you're on the whole?
About five hundred seven acres.
You got here's any?
He's got a copy of it.
Five point one third and then they, really for the judicial system, they'd like to have an option on that next piece of property for the future, first option on it.
And Kevin, the sheriff, he already, he recommended, I think, he told you about it, about having like that extra room, about having a, some sort of, he was excited for dogs and stuff for inmates to take care of. That's what he was talking about doing that.
There are two, there are two ideal lights in there that would work for judicial system. And that's, that's one thing I think our sheriff has spoke a lot about. And I've agreed with you about the safety of all of inmates and the cost to the courthouse and stuff. And these lights is, is together, you know, but as of right now, we need to go in for the jail.
Yeah.
You know, and just maybe leave that other nut for an option to when we come to that crossroad to certainly do that.
What sense?
That would be my opinion. But you think, Scott?
I agree. The jail is the most important thing right now. I think it would not be an issue working basically off the structure of the way DHR is built and Alda is built. That's how Alda wanted to match up with DHR and I think we can make the jail compatible as well. And I think the IDB would have to pass up on that plan anyway, so.
So, why aren't they here? Why isn't anybody from the industrial board here?
This is just, we're talking with you.
Scott, you have the paper that the sheriff gave us.
Which?
So, if you, if you use this jail.
Yes, sir. I guess the sheriff has...
I don't have to go back. We just, just one year.
This was a, a one year of lockup of housing. And the city of Hamilton spends about fifty thousand dollars over here in lockup of housing of city inmates. And Winfield spends about thirty-two to thirty-five thousand a year on inmates and lockups. That's quite a few inmates from each of those cities and that's not, that doesn't factor in. The number of grass like our police department might make, that's a felony offense. That's just, you know, people that the city arrests for misdemeanors, usually D-eyes or domestic assaults. And not missing misdemeanor thefts in that as well. It's quite a bit of abuse the city has in the jail.
Well, what do y'all, what do y'all root against today? We probably, you know, you don't always get what you want. I don't hear you out there with the stars.
Well, you know, it's, it's out using what I go, like, there's a percentage of that, you know, that's so many dollars, but so many of these prisoners brought to the city of Hamilton.
Right.
So many brought to each city. I think it'd be, it'd be these cities to take care of their percentage of the jail that they use with percentages of, how they pay on it at least. And, you know, we can, we're not, we're not in the situation that you are. We're, if we were able to use this tax money, it's going to be freed up for our part. That's all, we're not able to, to raise the tax because in some of the cities I know spoke up and said, well, we can afford to do without this tax money, put it toward jail. But it seems like if, you know, the ultimate raise, well, maybe half cent for a few years to make up for what you're going to be taking, taking from you until your part to go in the jail. It may be, I don't know, Scott, I've spoken with Bond people and all years and our senator and representative, that he may be able to add something.
I think that he knows it pretty good. The county was looking at a couple of options and basically looking at the cities for help. And a large part of this is due to the fact the county can't just go in and vote taxes in. One of them is, as you're aware, the county currently collects a one cent sales tax. Half of that goes to municipalities in the county. Hamilton last year, I believe our numbers showed, received about four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars off of that. The counties propose agreements with... Hamilton last year, I believe our numbers show, received about four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars off of that. The county's proposed agreements with each of the municipalities where the county could basically recapture some of that money and put it towards a jail, specifically for a jail, until such time as a bond was paid, paid off. That could be as much as two hundred thousand dollars from the city. Some of the municipalities had some issue about that, shocking, but, because they're dependent upon the money that, that they receive. So some of the municipalities propose, well, what if we just imposed our own sales tax? We put on a sales tax, say for five years. That money goes to the county jail, and based upon the numbers, that would more than be able to pay for the bond on a, say a ten million dollar jail, and hopefully, as Keith said, the county's able to get in there cheaper. Basically, from our standpoint, we're looking at those two options as possibilities, and we're open for suggestions.
Explain how this tax got changed, I keep telling hospital tax, explaining that.
Well, basically, and.
Where you got it originated story?
The, the tax was originated to pay for our county hospital. And in the sixties, there was a change to have some money go, go to the Board of Education. But once the county got out of the hospital business, there was concern about this tax going away for good. And so in nineteen eighty-one, it was changed so that the, the one cent that's collected, it used to be two cents. The one cent felt, one cent basically went to the Board of Education, that fell off. That's since been replaced there, the Board of Education receives a one cent sales tax. And so we had this one cent left, and now that money that's collected is divided, fifty percent to the municipalities, eight percent to the health department, and then forty-two percent goes to the county. So the county receives basically forty-two percent of one cent of the monies that it collects every year. So the county is looking at, if we put out maybe a part of our, well, the county receives, we commit to it, and if we can get the municipalities to commit to something down the road on a percentage that, based upon the sales tax that we currently collect in our county, which is roughly two point six million that that one cent collects, then we could pay for a jail and not impose a new tax burden onto the citizens of, I mean, county. From the county's perspective, I think that's the neatest, cleanest way to do it. But it's obviously money that each city has budgeted in now, and so what can we do about it?
You're talking about us one percent that we get and putting it into the jail of the city, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
How much does that one percent that we're paying come in, bring in from Hamilton?
How much does Hamilton's one cent?
And you're talking about us paying our one percent into the?
I think in, Hamilton makes about five hundred thousand dollars, just a little shot, five hundred thousand dollars off of the county's portion of that one cent sales tax. And so the county's asking for a percentage drop, but basically it comes out to two hundred thousand dollars from the city of Hamilton. But in, in Hamilton alone, our one cent sales tax, and Angela, you can correct me if I'm correct, I think our one cent sales tax, in Hamilton alone, generates a million dollars or so a year. If I remember the audit roughly correct, we generate about three million in sales tax.
What you're, what you're saying then is, you ask of us to do is generate two hundred thousand in ballpark, in ballpark there, from the sales tax.
That's right, yes, sir.
What it boils down to, it'll be basically Hamilton, Winfield, and Mary County paying for the jail. It's a county-wide problem.
Right.
And it's gonna basically be going Winfield, Hamilton, and Mary County.
We feel like, you know, we all, of course, all in this together, we've got to work on it. But we feel like we've been a little, we have paid for costs under, that's where we put it.
You're talking about Satah buildings.
The money we built, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Hamilton, so we're, our money's what we paid for. And y'all reap benefits such as, you know, the former tax, and people working over there, and Winfield was shut down. And let's see, we feel like, you know, we, our, part of our tax has been obligated to help the cities.
How many years have you been in one of them?
A hundred and fifty.
Our job's always to ask for medicine, the five and the high payers.
No, 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 we don't negotiate prices for, don't want to negotiate. We're not for, you get land.
We want y'all to give us some kind of a price of what y'all would ask for the land. We wouldn't buy the land from you to do that.
A reasonable price.
Right.
And you said we could go by the state's appraisal for the land that they got, and you told me a figure two or three weeks ago, but I don't remember.
I think it was basically two thousand dollars an acre.
Well, how, how many years is this two hundred thousand, are you saying that it would take to pay for it? Now, how long would this, how many years is this gonna be?
Well, of course, it'd be only, the price, well, it's probably be ten million dollar profit we're up to.
If we did, if we did that, ideally, you're gonna look at ten, ten years on, on that. If we came up with some other way to come, to come up with more money, we'd do five, we'd like to do it for five years. But at, at that kind of range, we're looking at probably ten, ten years, worst case scenario, fifteen.
I, I don't know. I think, I don't much want to sit here in my last year on this and, and commit two hundred thousand dollars for the next twenty years. That's a lot of money for us to commit. I want to do what we can to build the jail. I know we've got to have it, I don't know how to buy this bill. I know we can't keep going, we can't keep on, we've got to figure out a way, but, no, we own five acres that you're talking about building it on?
Yes, sir.
The land?
Yes, yes, city owned.
And what about that land now? What are you, you asking us to give a bank?
We want to purchase land.
Yeah. Well, but personally, what I'd rather do for our part would be to donate the land for the jail, instead of coming up with money. And we'd be through with it then. Now, I think.
If that land, I'll work two hundred thousand dollars a year.
They, well, I'm not saying for two hundred thousand a year, I'm just saying, if we give it to you though, I mean, we're giving, you know, but as far as us coming up with a two hundred thousand a year, what's everybody else gonna be paying?
This is, this is my thought, Gene, and, you know, this is just me, but this tax was added because the hospital was in debt. We had to save the hospital, if I'm, if I'm wrong, Scott can tell me wrong. But the county had to come together as a whole, because we're in dire need to save our hospitals. And this tax was added, and then the school got one, same other two, and then theirs was dropped. And then this tax has went to the city, then this is put on as a county tax, you know. And, and we needed the hospital saved, and we done that, and the county paid it off on account of our tax, and fixed it, and then built the buildings for the other that we don't own now. And we've still been paying on for, how many years, Scott?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years at two hundred thousand a year that the county is, and they're input towards those, and we still, we've not profited one dime off that, and the cities has a little, I don't know how much. But the same, the thing I think about it is, we've had to save that hospital, and we've got to build a jail. And this tax was put for the hospital, so why not take this tax money, a portion of it, we're not asking for all of it, a portion of it. If, I think we're in as much need of a jail as we was the hospital at the time. You don't need to lose any one, and you don't need to let the federalist, Mr. Bosson, say to come in, because when they do, the state may as well go triple, just go down to three, you're gonna go with the bad ones and whatever. And that's what we're looking at. And I think this tax, this is my opinion now, would be, the best way to do it is to say, hey, we had to have a hospital, we had a tax in the sixties, we brought that out, we got Satah, we got those, we paid for that, the city has profit, the county has profit, now we've got to come together and put this together, and let's get this jail going. And, and we're asking, we're not, we're asking you and Winfield and every other one. And if the others don't let get in, we're tripled or four times their lockup fees and whatever to make them wish they would've got in at the, at the tax money.
You know, I've already told you in here that I was talking about this, I said, we don't do what we should do or do for the jail. I said, what they're fixing to do is put us building our own jail. And I know that's what you're throwing at us right now, and see, I'd already thought that, I'd canceled. And I know you're saying, if you don't do this, we'll let you build your own jail. And I understand what, where you're coming from, see. And, but I'm a hundred percent for getting it done, don't get me wrong, I've been here all, and I'm, I was, you know, having it, and we got to work something out to build it, it's gotta be big. And regardless of how we feel about it, we've got to build the jail.
We do.
But I don't want to be forced and, and, you know, kind of, similar, we'll stick y'all with it, you know, if you don't do so, and so, you know, that's not the way to do it, and I'd start out with anybody of, of doing that, you know, because we, we're, it's much interested, probably more interested than anybody else in the county.
Right.
So, did you bring us a copy of our current contract that, that the jail functions under, that the sheriff signed, and the city signed, and the commission signed, so we know what we're obligated to right now?
I don't think so.
Is there one?
There's one, I just don't have it.
Okay, all right. So, once this new jail, once this starts, is the old contract null and void, or will it carry over? What I'm saying is, and I'm just gonna come out and say it, the threat, you know, if you don't give the money, we're gonna up this, is that a potential, or will the old contract that we're working under carry over?
It's always a, a potential, from the county's perspective, because they can raise those, those fees. But it is what it is right now.
Well, Gene, we don't want to look, I don't, I don't, I want to rehearse it, I call it a threat. And all I'm saying, if we can let the major ones to give in, which is Hamilton.
Yeah.
Or we have to give in, or if we can let those in, and the others can't get in, we, we can't, we can't give them the bait by not putting in something to help y'all, because y'all, if, if you put in, you know, with us, that's, that's, that's my, this has got to be a county-wide thing.
Oh, yeah, we, and we're the largest city, I understand that, and we've got to do our part.
Right.
And that's, you know, I just don't want to be forced into, into it, or, you know, but.
I'm sorry, that, that's, as you mentioned, that's part of the reason why a couple of municipalities mentioned about imposing their own sales tax, because if they did that, it could be for a lesser period of time, we can knock it out in five years, for instance. But that involves imposing an additional tax as well, and there's hurdles and issues about that. But it would be a lesser, as far as a year's kind of thing, to help pay for it and get it taken care of. But there's not a simple answer.
I do, both sides here, y'all are both, both on these things, what, if we do nothing ourselves, what kind of words would we use to describe what they, the federal government will do to us?
Yep.
What would we?
We got to do something.
We're gonna say, I mean, so we're gonna, we're, we're forced to do what we're in a situation we're in. Would you, would that be correct, Scott?
That's right. If, if feds come in, I think you mentioned, all bets are off at that point in time.
Well, I, I, hey, I'm, don't you think I'm, I'm, we got to do something, I'm ready, but we just don't have to end up with Hamilton paying, you know, as much as everybody else that's on this thing, to get it. And then them using the smaller towns, we've always used the jail, I don't know whether they paid or not.
But that's the point I made earlier, if we, if, if Hamilton and Winfield, and, and maybe get in, or if it's just Hamilton and Winfield gets in, I'm like you, these other towns, we can't house them for what we're housing them, and they might only up something, and that's what I was talking about, you know, we might have to raise theirs if y'all get them to, to make up for theirs not, not doing it, not helping us along, you know. And they may help us all, I don't know. That's what we're, we're, we're asking y'all for help.
Well, we've got, we've got, I mean.
And basically, bottom line is the city, if I'm not saying Winfield and Hamilton, if there's only two that come with the total, and these other towns can't, basically, Hamilton and Winfield would be twenty percent each, and the county would be sixty percent of the jail. That's what it'd be, that's the number, that's the figures on it. The county would pay sixty percent, Winfield would be twenty percent, basically, of whatever the bond payment would be each year.
What's our sales tax, you know, I don't even know, can it, seven percent? Seven percent? Well, we can't let it be a tax.
Some, some of the cities like Calabria and Winfield are already at ten percent sales tax, but they both bought their hospitals, and they've imposed themselves a tax to pay for their hospital purchases and city schools that they run. And we're at nine, which is one cent under them. It's not, it's not gonna be a real easy fix, it's gonna take sacrifices on a lot of people's power, and, I mean, we, we don't want a jail, Hamilton don't want to own a jail. So we, we want to find a way to bind the county jail, use its services, and eight million sounds better than ten, you know, if we can do it for that. But I wouldn't guarantee that that's the figure we can do it for.
Well, we've got, I had to talk to them in a couple of months, and this has been, what, four months ago, I guess, thirty-four, when they quoted us those prices.
And this is, this is a county problem, and you could, we could apply some papers, pice, we bring in, they do, it's money, even though everything, probably, they don't mind who, what it is, it's in our lap, we gotta do something about it.
They don't make a better deal, we're not in the pice, we gotta do it now, it's in our hands, and we just gonna have to do it. We're gonna have to figure out a way to do it. I'm, but I, personally, I'm, I'd like to, for us to get off.
Has anybody taken care of the jail?
I'd be afraid to, if they can let, wouldn't mean.
I wouldn't recommend it.
That'd be a good gift.
Posse?
Good shaking.
Still got food.
I heard another guy, he was, he was out four years ago.
I heard, it's been a recent time, though.
And I know, like I said, the inmates, you know, they're in there for a reason, and sometimes it revolves around, they go back and forth, and they should be slept on the ground, and we hear all kinds of things. But the problem is, we've got the government federal over you, and everything's gotta be built to the way they do it, and you gotta, and house them, you know, it's humane, and besides, their deputies and their sheriff, what they go through with that, that jail?
People've got to work in that environment.
They gotta work in that, and just like Scott said, he's gonna know, I mean, they gotta go through this, and they gotta work in this. This is a county problem. Because it affects not only these towns, of all these towns in this county, industry coming in, looking at this, where your jail is just as poor as your hospital and these schools. If you got no place to put your inmates, and there's no room for them, they may turn loose.
It, it's, it's a blight on the city, it's a blight on the county, if, if we do have an industry coming in, it's at the airport, and they're gonna come in, they're gonna see that, and that puts out a black eye for our area, because that's what it looks like. And it also goes to the safety of our citizens, because there are people that should be in that are not, because as Scott sees, jails don't have any place to put, you know, and we'd like to be able to use it as a threat, but we can't, because we don't have room. We'd like to be able to use it as a threat, but we can't, because we don't have room. So, there's a multitude of reasons. It's one of those, why aren't we spending money on jail? But, man, it's, it affects so much more than just being in jail.
Well, we've been lucky.
We have been.
We have been lucky to not have somebody killed and a lot of, because some of them have been there and others... All right. Now, what you're saying here, I'm trying to get this down, what you're asking us for is 200,000.
I'm at 500,000. If the young, the city gets 500,000.
Right.
A year.
Off that tag.
I don't know if we hit 500,000. Out of the music, 500,000. It's burned down. 22% goes to the county. It's been going to the county. And the county has been paying these buildings, SITEL buildings, Winfield, Hamilton, for all these years, out of that 22%. 8% goes to the airport, but the 50% goes to the cities, which I think Hamilton's part, I forgot the cities on that.
All right, getting back, but how about the land, Matt? What do y'all, what do you want to do about it? You want us to...
Well, that's what we want the old jail for.
We don't buy from them. We just put that in the bond and we don't pay it. I mean, that's the only way. It wouldn't be back to ask, you know, do they ask you to give up land, too? I don't think it would be.
At 10,000 a acre, that's 51,400 dollars for the land. It's 5.14 acres.
That has the sewer and the water and all of that, and then you've got the street in front, so, you know, that's, which we'll have to do that before the commission, you know, to do that. We can't say, yeah, we'll take it. We're telling my, my junior, say, need to talk about it, see, but if that's what y'all want.
If they agree to set it, if it can, it's like giving it to you for what that, uh, buying down. I've got 20 something acres right there. But I wouldn't take no report.
And I guess, I don't understand if the land's gonna go into the bond and we're paying the money to pay on the bond, or we're not paying for the land ourselves, our own land?
You want me to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Land's a requirement for a project like this. You can't do it on water. You gotta put it on land. So, they've got to do it with land. We got the right land for them. We need to work out a deal on this piece of property and get that solidified. Aren't y'all wanting to move fairly quickly on this problem? If anything's done this year, that's gonna have to do...
Well, it needs to be done. I mean, there's no question. It needs to be done a long time ago. You don't want that. We got to do something.
When you're talking about paying the land, you'll only pay your percentage of what you're obligated to in the bond on the land. We need to definitely look at the numbers like we say. We're gonna be looking at a new budget in September. And we'll have to budget without that 200,000, you know, city where we make up the difference. We're talking about getting the laws, but we're not starting that building until April, so we're, sometime in '21, we'll start reaping some benefits off of it, but we won't immediately pallet the money off the laws. It's just, it's futuristic. We know it's coming, but so far, we haven't reaped one dime off of it, but we will. But still, is this, I mean, how firm are these figures you're talking Scott, to you starting? I mean, are they pretty, pretty close to...
Yes, sir. Pretty, pretty firm. Assuming we can get in the jail for 10 or less, you know, that's, that's really the key. And another thing we can just talk about is everybody shop Marion County. Everybody shop Hamilton. That'd increase our sales tax and, you know, that'd help out everything right there. And hopefully, we'll see with laws and some future development on the interstate, a lot of tax dollars coming in from people that don't live here. That's the ideal solution. But our sales tax numbers have been up. Hopefully, they'll continue to go up for a few years. And just that extra money there will help out quite a bit, but we've got to get something to get off the ground.
Well, if we give you, we're looking at 200,000. We just gave you 150,000 land, but that's the same thing. Be a little better for them.
It was for that first year. And as close as I get.
What you, the other way, you're gonna get paid for, we're gonna pay for half your land back to you, because we're, we're gonna, we're gonna put, pay myself on it. So, you hurt yourself, you gave us all the land.
Well, I'm not even hurting Bob.
It'd be a better deal if we buy the land, because that way, Winfield would pay part of their percentage and the county pay their percentage. The 200 they're gonna need is on government. It's gonna go on for another year, so the bonds pay off. You know, they'll need that same 200,000 again and again and again, but the bonds pay off each year.
Yeah.
And then leave the portion that one bill puts up and whatever that had worked out with the other cities in the county, whether it's in fees or actual money.
That, that's the point that I was making when I was telling June, you know, this has got to be a countywide thing. And the towns, you know, Hackaburger, June, Bryant, Bear Creek and all, if they don't, if they can't afford to come up with money and they use this for their budget, and I understand that, because we're all on tight budgets. And, you know, if they can't do that, you'll have to raise their, their housing and their fees to pay their part for this new jail on that. That is the point I was making. I don't know, June thinking I threaten, we're gonna, telling you not behind the, the building is...
Yeah, put it in the old jail.
Yeah, put it in the old. But that jail was built in '79, I believe, down there. They moved in it in '80, I believe. And if I understand, I think it was built for 65 inmates. And last week, I think Kevin told me they had 163 in it. I mean...
It stays up about that.
Yeah. I mean, and Scott can talk about, Scott, he can talk about the feds and the stuff on that, and what they paid us from the...
I'd be willing to lay, if everybody else was, to get you kind of started, took a million, 150,000 dollars to it. And said, you get these other towns to go and see where you come up in the end, then, that you've already got this. And if it comes down to, after it's all said and done, I'd say we'd come back maybe again. What do you think, Herb? Yeah? No, that, that 150 sounds better, but if we've got to come up with 200, I'll come up with 200.
Those fees that this jail's operating costs to the jail, that what the...
I'll let Scott tell you what most of those fees are.
Yes, pretty much.
And about our budget, the general funding of the county, what is it? How many is it? 60% maybe?
Oh, yeah. Probably a little bit more than that.
62 or 3%. Goes straight to the jail operating. The county, districts, engineer, everything else works off the rest.
So, are your operation costs gonna be about the same if you build a bigger jail?
No, it'd be higher.
Definitely higher. I hate when you couldn't...
So, you anticipate having to go up on the fees with a new jail?
Hopefully, there's some topic, and maybe go up on court costs to that.
Yeah.
They're gonna use the jail.
We're gonna act this out about a year.
We're trying to accumulate whatever way, assuming the county, whatever department that we can accumulate on money to cover, cover some of that stuff.
That's why I was asking about the current contract. If it's gonna remain in the thing, if it's gonna be reinsurance, because if it's reinsurance and it starts to, you know...
And this has been on, it's been on about, right out of year. And it's just gone, don't worry, some may have...
How much, you know, influence going on?
Is that contract with the jail gonna stay the same as it is now? Of course, it's much, you're gonna go up on it.
Well, we're gonna, it's based on operating. I mean, it's one where you can operate on that enough to get where you can't operate. That's something that had to be negotiated. That's where it is negotiated from when the jail was built until my time was negotiated.
Yeah. Ideally, from the county's perspective, you know, if, and I think I could say this without, if the city's willing to commit, like what y'all are talking about, I know there's more discussion that has to be had there, then I think the county could commit to y'all to barring something unforeseen, you know, to keep, keep the numbers as is.
Well, that's putting up this money and, and all of that, we're still gonna be obligated to pay for each prisoner, whatever it is, when they go in, because that's what it's gonna be paid for.
Is that right? The operation cost would be based on those fees?
Yeah.
It won't have anything to do with the bond?
Won't have anything to do with building the jail.
That goes into, basically, a special fine, a good bit of that. If I'm not mistaken, and went to help with the healthcare down there, that's a huge cost.
Our healthcare was 235,000 dollars until we negotiated. And then to keep prisoners, we go down 100,000, 13, 18,000 dollars a month, we paid for healthcare.
See, the county's liable to that. They seize off the hook for that.
See, I didn't know, I knew you had to say, say, the people in the county don't realize that, such things.
The insurance is no good. It's, it's... That's right. I said, if you've got the insurance, if you've got good health, good shoes...
We'd be giving half of it to the county then, but have a certain percentage. If we donated the land, would be donating half of it or...
20% of it.
Yeah. 20% of it or better to the county.
That healthcare, Gene, that's what I told Matt. If you've got good insurance, the minute you sign in at the jail, they put you in jail, your insurance is no good and the county has to pick up your insurance. And that's what, that's what costs.
And if you have crime committed in your city limits, we take responsibility when they come to the county jail. There are, we can't even talk about it. There are no more, there are no longer your responsibility.
There are some time of year for, like that. And the longer the people stays in the jail, the dip and dunk, and Scott can talk about that, the more money it costs.
Well, there's just more to it than we know, see. That's the thing, like Bob said, uh...
If we're the city inmates and state inmates, the county could do great with our inmates. The county, we can survive. We could go to jail. I mean, we could survive if we didn't have city inmates and state inmates. Because you guys gotta take it.
Yeah, you got all of the, you got all of the cities and the counties inmates.
And the state.
And the state, yeah.
So, I mean, if everybody's, if all these cities was going to the jail business, that's great, but that's something we don't have.
I'm going to say you... I'm not gonna say you much longer. I'm sure I'm gonna... I think the next, then they're in the cemetery.
The county has to take our inmates unless they commit a municipal crime, and then they can refuse them, otherwise they have to take them.
Yeah.
And a municipal crime would be like a violation of our ordinance?
Something like that, that's right.
But regardless, otherwise, they have to take them.
Right. And I think basically the agreement is to take them even on the violations.
Well, how does that, I think we say here in talk for more than a month to, I don't think we're getting charged. That's just where I felt when I don't think can, I, I think the 200,000 dollars we're gonna be, even can be, we look into a lot of things that I've saw lately and save 200,000 dollars.
We certainly needed to hear from this young debate on this matter, because it's a pressing matter and it's expensive, what they're talking about doing. They, they've got a task ahead of them and I don't want to sit in their chair right now and try to figure this out. I know we've got to help. If this is the portion that they've got to have from us to make it work, then we need to consider, you know, we have more than we have to give, but that's why I'm, I don't want to hear numbers and annual cost, we want to share in the cost, because you house our people, our prisoners. As Sammy says, you may be required to do that, but still, it costs money to do it.
And one of the things, Mr. Mayor, that I, that I think that people don't understand in this, like Kenneth said earlier, a lot of people say, well, we don't care how we house them or whatever. But if you look countywide, there is not a family that is not affected by this jail. Everybody's got a member family. It may not be immediately, but somewhere, there's a tide of that jail that you kill your grandkids, your great-grandkids, your cousins and friends. It affects countywide, and some don't care. But I care if it's my, if it's my kinfolk, you know, if they're down the line. They need taken care of. And I'm like Kenneth. Sometimes, you know, some people may say, well, they're not, they're gonna kill. But a lot of them let you do that. And, but every family, every family is affected by it.
You got somebody's dating, somebody's brother.
That's right.
Somebody's child.
That's right.
Somebody's grandchild.
Grandchild is what you... You don't have to treat them like they're late for this.
Somewhere down the road, there's a family affected by somebody in here.
As Gene said, we sat here and talked for a month.
We've been talking for a year about it.
We appreciate, you know, after this comes up here and, and I think it's been very favorable to get... We're gonna, we're gonna meet with the industrial board and we're gonna have Scott to come back with us. We're gonna ask this out, work out the logistics on it, and then we're gonna consider what you've asked us today. Scott will give us enough numbers to back it up and we thank y'all for coming.
I have one more question. Kenneth's mentioned twice, didn't know.
Yes, it was passed, the state was passed, Winfield, Winfield, the law makers, what was it, 2008 or...
I'll get over Scott. Can I say?
Scott, let me explain this.
So, like you said, probably over a decade ago, about 10 years ago, when you have people who were on probation, violate their probation by technical violations, so they fail drug tests, they're not reporting to the probation office, things like that, their punishment is capped. It's capped at a maximum of 35 days. About 45 days used to be in the Department of Corrections, so we'd send them to the state, the penitentiary system for those 45 days or up to those 45 days. What the legislature has proposed, that I think is in part of the governor's bill for prison reform this go around, is to put that back on the counties, to the county system. So, that maximum of 45 day punishment that used to go to the penitentiary, they're now gonna say, we're not taking them anymore. You gotta house them in your county jail. So, the dip and dunk is not gonna go to the state penitentiary anymore. It's gonna be housed in your county jail, which on a short-term basis will inflate the population of your county jails, you know, for a 30 or 45 day period. And could, you could see a, a permanent increase in that population, depending on how many of those dips and dunks you get every 30 day period.
And it affects the whole state. It's saving the state millions. It's costing counties millions. And this is later stages has passed this in Montgomery. And this thing needs to be changed.
You better share it real level over a period.
Well, gentlemen, we thank y'all. We're gonna take this and consideration on related to hear from you today. Well, gentlemen, we thank y'all, we're gonna take this and consideration on, we needed to hear from you today. Uh, we're gonna ask the DA to stay, I invited him to come and talk to us about another matter today, and, uh, I want, I want him to stay with us.
Oh, you know, we got to work with you. We have, we have, we have, we have, uh... We've checked these other...
Appreciate it. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, we're ready to go back and talk some more, we've had our minister, the guy that's going in the seats, and, uh, for some special work, and Scott's here on, on behalf of a, a new program that's, uh, being introduced to the area, and I know he didn't tell us about it, and, and whether it's able to be from the most perhaps supported.
Three or four months ago, uh, some of the people in my office, we sort of sat down to kind of look at trends that we were seeing in criminal cases, and, and one of the things that we saw was we've, we've seen an increase in domestic violence, uh, sexual assault, child abuse type cases in the Twenty-Fifth Circuit, obviously includes Hamilton, Marion County, and what we have definitely seen in the last three years is there has been a decrease in the, um, the, the repetition of, of the investigators that are in that case, uh, in those types of cases. Uh, so, we're getting, you know, an investigator from Hamilton that does this case, and they may do it a little bit differently than the investigator in, uh, Weefield. Somebody may do it different in Hewitt, somebody may do it different from the county system, somebody may do it different in Winston County. Uh, and we need to have, um, some, some structure there, for especially for those kind of cases, they're, they're ultra-important to us, uh, anytime you've got a domestic violence case, anytime you've got a sexual assault case, those are, to, in my opinion, some of the most important cases that ever come through my office. Uh, those are people that have real injuries, real psychological problems occurring after this crime, and so we've got to be able to build that, the best case we can in those situations. Um, last year, we saw, this is just domestic violence cases, we saw eighty-two felony domestic violence cases in the Twenty-Fifth Circuit, Marion, Winston County. So, it's eighty-two cases of domestic violence that it had either the perpetrator, it was their third or subsequent offense for domestic violence, or you had a serious physical injury, strangulation, or suffocation in that case. So, out of that, those eighty-two cases, in ninety-five, upwards of ninety-five percent of those cases involve victims who are women and young children. And science and everything else has shown that women and children in those situations, they can be embalmed, they can be sexually abused, they can be sexually assaulted, uh, physically assaulted, they respond better when they're being interviewed and talked to by a female than they are a male. And so, all that's to say is, what we've looked at, we decided we needed to look to hire a female investigator. Uh, we don't have any female investigators in Marion or Winston County. Uh, the last investigator, female investigator we had was, uh, Officer Don Dodd, who was a, worked for the Drug Task Force, and is now, uh, the jail administrator here in Marion County. And then we have, uh, Macy Hughes Green, who's a patrol officer for City Hamilton. Uh, those are the only two female officers that we have here. Uh, Don, obviously not in a position, kind of at the end of her, the backside, I won't say the end, but the backside of her legal or law enforcement career, not really interested in coming back in and doing sexual assault investigations, um, and Macy's kind of the same way, she was at the beginning of her career. So, we looked for somebody who is interested in coming to the Twenty-Fifth Circuit to help with these situations and these problems, that's a female. And I don't know if y'all have been involved in trying to find female investigators, female law enforcement officers, they're tough to find, but, uh, as of current, uh, we brought our candidate down, met with the mayor last, two weeks ago. Um, one way, she's in her mid-thirties, she currently works for a municipal law enforcement department in North Alabama, she's been in law enforcement for approximately ten years, has been in investigations for over five years, and does all of that municipalities, uh, domestic violence, sexual assault, and, uh, child abuse type cases. So, what am I here for? I'm gonna ask you for money, I told everybody, I was talking to them, um, so the, the question then became, how do we pay for it? Uh, everybody's budgets, especially law enforcement budgets, are stretched thin. Uh, I know my budget stays thin, I'm sure everybody else's does, you know, I hear, you know, the county has problems coming up with the jails, so we're trying to come up with a plan, how do we make this in a bite-sized, digestible, uh, portion for our municipalities and our counties to, to be able to consume? Um, the plan we came up, came up with was to divide this across the Twenty-Fifth Circuit. There are eleven municipalities and two county governments, uh, in the Twenty-Fifth Circuit, and then my office to handle the, the bulk of what's there. So, what I've come to this, to this work session to present to y'all is the idea that we have a female investigator that will come in, would handle all of your serious domestic violence, all of your sexual assault, child abuse cases that would occur in the city of Hamilton. Uh, obviously, we could do this by memorizing, understanding with your law enforcement officials, you get with, uh, Chief Vickery, uh, anybody else in the police department, present that to the council for review, uh, to come up with, like I said, the serious, uh, domestic violence cases, felonies, any kind of domestic violence that has serious physical injury, all of your sexual assault cases, all of your, uh, child abuse cases, can be handled by this investigator. And the plan is to ask the eleven municipalities for an annual contribution of twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, that twenty-five hundred dollars would go towards salary and benefits for this investigator, it would be on a year-to-year basis. Uh, I'm not asking you for a ten-year, five-year, three-year, and who knows, what I'm asking for. At this time, it's a twenty-five hundred dollar annual contribution to that. We'll come back again next March or so, and see how everything's worked out, come back and make that ask again if it has worked out, uh, in the hopes that we could continue this as a community policing project, uh, moving forward. I, I think it's gonna be a, a benefit to your local law enforcement officers, uh, your local investigators. Uh, you talk to those guys, uh, Chief Vickery, and I hope he would be here to kind of talk about that and his role, but these are the kind of cases that take lots of man-hours, lots of, lots of hours dedicated to that one case, uh, to get wrapped up and get a complete case file ready to send to my office for prosecution. Uh, I know, you, you look at overtime hours that you spend, um, for officers who, you know, they've got deadlines for these cases, but they've also got other cases working, you know, they have property cases, theft cases, drug cases, that they're out chasing them as well. And so, every hour they spend over that, that you're paying overtime on, is money that you're losing there. I mean, if you have, uh, you need one serious sexual assault case that occurs in the city of Hamilton per year, then, uh, the twenty-five hundred dollar donation, and having, uh, this investigator through my office investigate that's money ahead for, uh, the city. The contributions that I'm asking for from our local governments will fund about half of the salary and benefit package, um, that we are planning to offer, sorry. And, uh, my office will cover the other half, uh, comes out of my budget, with approximately twenty-five percent of that is coming from a grant from, for domestic violence, the other twenty-five percent just comes from my budget. And then we've looked at, it'd probably be, uh, absent purchasing a, an automobile, uh, for that investigator, at the current time, we're gonna rearrange some things, I'm gonna go back and drive my old truck, and she's gonna drive my work vehicle, uh, that'll be assigned to her, but, uh, absent, without a vehicle, you're still giving about eight to ten thousand dollars to equip, uh, that officer, that, that will be kind of one-time expenses that we'll take care of, out of my budget, so... Twenty-five hundred dollars, that's what I'm asking you for.
Well, how soon would you put this person to work, Scott?
She is available to start work, uh, on April the first, is where we're at with her.
This twenty-five hundred dollars, is that for each county, I mean, each city?
Each, each city would be twenty-five hundred dollars. Basically, what I'm looking at is, uh, with the cities, I'm asking for twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, the county left up, they'll watch this on Twenty-Nine County News, and then when I go to ask them, I'm asking for five thousand from each of the county commissions, uh, that are there. Uh, so, out of the, out of those thirteen local, um, governing bodies, you're looking at about thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, is what that one half would be. That would actually leave me with about thirty-five, five hundred, it's a limit over seventy-three thousand dollars, total benefits, package, you know, retirement, uh, health insurance, and salary.
I met the candidate that's, uh, being considered, and, uh, she was an impressive person, so to speak.
Uh, I, I can tell you more about her if you, if you wanna know that, you know, she's, uh, I told you about her law enforcement career, she's, uh, um, master's degree from University of North Alabama, community development, uh, with a focus in interview, and, uh, doing graduate degree work at the University of North Alabama, and, um, I know we've talked to her, for, for this first part right now, she has some, uh, elderly parents and all that live next door to her and her husband, that they plan on trying to, to take care of, but they have an eye toward trying to relocate to, out of Marion or Winston County at some point in the foreseeable future, so... I told the mayor, I said, that would be, y'all would recruit him to move here, or, or ship off in the middle of her home floor, or...
We'd love to consider Hamilton. Thank you for this presentation, Scott, and any questions?
Answering questions, anything else you might got?
We'll take this under consideration, and, uh, try to bring it to a point on our agenda soon.
So, that, that's, that would be her job, the only thing she'd be involved with?
That would be her, her main job, she, she could fill in and help with other investigations when she doesn't have an active, uh, case in one of those three areas, but, you know, if a case comes up in one of those three areas, it, that's the, that's the main priority for her. Any other case she might be working on would kind of fall the, the wayside and focus on that domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse case would be the first and foremost.
Well, thank you very much, Scott, and we'll certainly give this consideration. Uh, we can't vote today on that, maybe, but this is just to hear you, um, and hear what your plan is for this person, uh, to do, and, and to help out with the, that's, those cases seem like the hard ones to me.
They, they are the hard ones, um, I know one question that I've been asked everywhere else I've been, you were the seven, sixth municipality that I've gone to, six municipalities. So, I've gone to five prior, uh, they've all been actual council meetings that I've been to. Uh, I'm back to five right now, so...
Okay.
I, I've talked to five, and there's five on board, so...
Well, I think the, the amount is really reasonable for, to expect from each municipality, and, and the fact that you're picking up a good deal at the town, uh, just needs some assistance to make it happen, I think that, that helps my mind about it. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
We've got a few other topics we would just throw out briefly, now, we're about out of time today. Uh, there's some consideration being given to declare, um, our recreation center a place of shelter during storms, we've got a, a real neat, uh, basement area, we can't declare it a safe place, uh, because it's not designed that way, but particularly don't wanna stay in a manufactured home, uh, in case of a storm, I bet we could provide them a safer place than maybe they're in. We can't declare it a storm shelter, but I'd like for us to think about, uh, opening it up in significant weather times, and have someone designated to do that, opening and closing of the shelter as soon as the threat is gone. Uh, I, I don't specifically tell anybody that we've got a storm shelter available, because that's not what it is, it's, but it's a basement, the building's standing there thirty-something years, and storms haven't damaged it to, to date, uh, I think it's safer than a lot of buildings in town would ever be. Uh, and it would hold a lot of people if we wanted to use it, and...
In the past, did we not get into some situations during that, Scott? Sorry.
That's all right.
It's not ADA, but we don't all know whether to get over into it.
Yes, and, and damage, and, and you're saying it's not ADA, so...
Yeah, well, it, yeah, we'd like to put people to the back for the, uh, handicapped and get them in the back door, but, but it's, it's not a stairwell, you'd have to navigate stairs to get down into it if you went through the front, so... I think we have to patrol. Now, Chief? Well, I don't know. Uh, it, it could be troublesome, and, and if it, if it leaves anyone out, you know, there's, there's issues with that. Uh, I'm not, I haven't really looked at the backside to see if someone that, like, would be in a wheelchair or crutches couldn't get in from the back, uh, but, uh, it's strictly a stairwell climb up and down, uh, is the only way you can access the basement from the front of the building.
Only way you could be safe would be have somebody, the ones that's gonna go up, somebody to sign a, some kind of a paper, a lawyer or something, that we're not responsible if they get hurt in any way, in any storm, or going in and out, and all that. That's what, that we should have gotten, that we, if something did happen, that it sued the city.
Now, I don't know about access to the back, unless, you know, they could travel around to the back. I haven't been back there since this, that'd be the access point.
It would, it would rock my attention, the, the city's deficit in that kind of a shelter, and, uh, we haven't been able to come up with one that's significantly, uh, built for storms and, um... I just threw that out as a topic for discussion, and I'm not, I'm not saying we should do it or shouldn't do it, it's been, it's been brought to my attention by, by the people.
Well, don't get me wrong now, I'd be a hundred percent for it, if you had a way for them to sign that you couldn't turn around and sue the city, because I, it not being a, really a storm shelter, and them coming on there for a storm shelter, you're gonna have an idiot that's gonna sue you if something happens.
Well, I understand if we imply, even imply, that it's totally safe, that we'd be in the wrong.
Yeah.
I mean, because we can't declare it, we didn't, we didn't design the building as a storm shelter.
But if you don't have them to sign when they go in there, that, well, if you did have...
Any public building now that's not all-inclusive poses some problems and risks also. But it's just, it was, it'd been brought to my attention that we might could, uh, let some people come there in the case of severe stormy weather, but if they don't think it's a good idea, we'll table this matter today.
What, what, what do you think, Scott? I might want to consider it, but it, it poses a lot of risk.
Yeah.
As Tammy said, we had ran into that a little bit, some of that was lack of preparation when the refugees came, and if we looked into seeing maybe what we needed to do, and if we could do that at a low cost, uh, you know, it might be something to do. It is a nice, large building, uh, but we don't wanna put people in a dangerous area, uh, without the safety of it.
Of course, I'd like to, I, I'm not, I mean, I'd like to put them in there.
Right.
You know, and even myself, maybe, you know, but, it, it, yeah.
It'd be a lot to consider, because, I mean, there's gonna be people that are coming, they're gonna wanna bring their animals, and, and, you know, you're gonna have to look at a lot of different... There would have to be, you know, a strict set of rules there, and if we couldn't offer it to those that are handicapped, I mean, they're discriminating, so, so, I mean, it's just, as far as I'm concerned, it's...
Uh, on a bottom note here, Andrea has presented the city with a... On a final note here, Andrea has presented the city with an invoice that had to do with Wharton Engineering doing some town work for this building that we're sitting in. It showed up in the last quarter of the year, $2,890, and she paid him in September of 19 for this work, says it's the first time she was asked for the money, and she's saying that we should reimburse her for this work, it's already work that she said was built into the city hall job, and this guy for some reason didn't give her the bill on timely manner, but he wouldn't write it off, she was, she had to pay it.
When were the services proposed?
It, that's back to this, this job here, and this job's three and a half years over.
So how long do you have to present someone with the bill?
It depends, but typically it would be about a three-year period, I think. And that's why I was trying to find, Andrea tried to give me the story, what happened. This engineer was used, or this consultant was used for multiple city projects, and he waited until the rec center was completed to build for all of it.
Was that in the agreement?
I don't know if there was anything like that, I think Andrea questioned that, but Andrea went ahead and paid the guy for the work that he did.
I guess I'd want to see the agreement, I mean, when he was hired, or, you know.
He was.
How long did it take him to wait three and a half years to send somebody a bill?
He was a part of her work team, I cannot say when, I told her, I said, "This timing just seems all wrong with Andrea, I can't just hand over $2,890 three and a half years after the job's finished without, you know, researching this some." She said that he demanded this money when she was trying to close out the rec center, what she owed him on that project, as well as this invoice, and she said she was pretty much coerced or forced to pay it in order to get him to sign off some work that had been done at the rec center. And I told her, I wish I had known it before she paid the money out instead of after the fact, and she's come and presented us with that same invoice for reimbursement, and Angela and I just couldn't just cut the check, going to the door, we felt like we needed to get some advice on what to do about it. It's just, I believe in paying all these bills, but there's, to me, there's some limits on the timing of the job, I don't know that there, but it just, it seems all wrong, I can't get my hands around it exactly as why it was three and a half years down the road before the bill showed up. You can see in her check there where she's included that invoice in the payment of the large sum, about $35,000 of the same company, same people.
But does this not say she already paid it?
She's paid it.
Says she paid it in September, September 27th, 2000 something?
2019. There's another copy of the check, it says, it was paid September 27th of 19.
Okay.
Can you say whatever?
She's paid it, you know, I'm like the mayor, and Andrea's trying to get up with me, and I haven't been able to get all the background information. I don't know why this particular consultant waited so long in presenting the bill to Andrea, and she was put into a negative position because they had to sign off to close out the rec center project. So she went ahead and paid the guy. But, so she's out, that was a $2,800, whatever that is, that she's, she's paid, and she's, apparently has paid it. You know, that's a question I would have with, is it Wharton?
Wharton, yeah. She's been to me that this particular job already worked like he did, and bill was supposed to be paid by the city instead of by her funds, because she said that this job was designed without any.
But she paid it in September, and she's just asked us for the money six months later?
Well, it showed up about, we've been dealing with it about 45 days now, we've acknowledged the bill for about the last 45 days or so.
I didn't know it had been that long.
Well, it's maybe 30 to 45.
Well, I mean, these emails say March. March the 9th, then March the 11th. We sent her an invoice in February, but she paid it in September? No, that's February of 19, she got the invoice in February of 19, paid it in September of 19, and then asked us.
She's, she's recently brought it to me and asked for reimbursement, and it's, I haven't had it that long, I've had it less than two months, maybe more than a month, but I hadn't, I told her to start to have some time to work on that, we've been back and forth some, and I just, I couldn't believe it was that old, and we'd never seen the bill on the year we had it.
So I guess the question is, was the first bill in February of 19 within the time limit to present the bill?
I'm not sure when they did their work, so I wouldn't know. I would think, I would think it is, it's obviously a severe delay, because we've been in this building for.
Three years?
If y'all would like to let her come and present the reasoning behind this enforcement, it'd be better than a message delivered from me, I've just got the invoice here and have not paid it, but I really didn't tell her I wouldn't pay it, I just told her that I had to have some time to work through it, and I wanted to disclose to you guys before I just got a check and handed over in the course of business, you know, we paid her a lot of money upon presentation of the bill, but this was over three years early, and we didn't know it till recently.
Oh, that's not three years old, that's ten days in there. I thought it was just about a year old, it's three years.
This goes back to August the 15th of 2016, so obviously it was done before that.
My goodness. Something wrong with me. Bad day, but somewhere.
Golly, damn. We'll stand adjourned, and we'll get back together and, as I said, you know, think about this, if you get a chance. That under disclosed to you what really happened here, and she's told me and Angela kind of what happened, that I think Wharton, when he laid this bill in front of her, said, "You have paid me all you owe me before I sign off on the rec job," and he was one of the main engineers on the job and could hold paperwork for a long time, and the aggravation that it, if he wanted to be. Thank y'all for coming today, I appreciate each one of you.
Thank you.